I want to do what is best for the students, teachers, and community of the Delaware Valley School District. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation, under God, with due respect, with the received justice of law. Thank you. Doggy Tank, Ryan Carso, Jessica Decker, Jack Fisher, Cory Homer, Dan Watson, Jack O'Leary, Seth Pike, and Jennifer Black. May I have a volunteer to read the mission statement?
I'll read it.
Thank you Cory.
Delaware Valley School District, our partnership with our community stands committed to maximizing student potential, fostering lifelong learning, and promoting responsible citizenship.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Dawn, a second? Dawn, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no objections, the motion carries. I would like to remind the public that comments are welcome. Identify yourself and see if you can be recognized. If you don't speak, oh. Didn't see you there. Now we have one or two presentations.
Yeah, first we have Odyssey and Mind teams to be recognized. As you know, there are four teams that are going to the world finals. May 24th to 28th, I believe it is, at Michigan State. Ladies, would you like to be first? Put your dress some decoratively. Come on in kids, you can come right up on the start board.
Hello, good evening. Well, this is our team from Delaware Valley Elementary School. We have Brielle and Ruby, we have Ryan, Kaylee, Olivia, and Cole, Lori Schlenker, and I'm Tammy Curtis.
And I'm Lauren Lockwood, which is the tech team Delaware Valley School. This is Elena, John, Scott, and Shayna from my team.
We've got the DB High School tech team here, a sampling of us. We have Shannon the Bust, Abra Shamine, Jake Bark, and I'm Jake Lockwood.
Oh, I didn't know that. I have the high school vehicle team. We've got Julianne Leefler, Brianna Rose, Denise Decker, Noah Narducci, and Nick Estrella. And I, Kathy Davidson, I'm their coach. And this is Michelle Busini, she's the tech, high school tech coach.
Raise your hand if you, this is gonna be your first time going. First time in the world. The other kids will tell you, you're gonna love it, it's gonna be great. It's worth the trek all the way up.
And we're very, very grateful for your support for our program. It's just a wonderful, wonderful program. We all get so much out of it.
Our elementary kids have something.
Thank you, and for all the hours that you gave us.
We got a couple on the radio, bless us.
Oh yeah, our team's reaping a lot.
Can we hear a little bit about each team's problem? Was there a problem presented?
Yeah, absolutely.
Actually, three of us, like Delaware Valley actually swept the tech department this year. That was awesome. So we have the elementary, middle, and high school tech. So, you guys wanna tell them a little bit?
That will be good.
Oh, well, the problem is about having our robot, and it copies the activities that are done by the characters. And our skit is like a candy kingdom, so like we have all our characters doing it. So we have different activities that the robot has to complete by copying each character. One time it has to be done with the same movement that gets solved by a character doing. And the second time it has to do it the same movement and it can rest where.
Well said.
Yeah, so we are, I'm on the vehicle team. But our problem is called Catch As You Can. We had to build three small vehicles that were on like a trail road trying to get to a secret meeting. They had to do things to make them not be followed, stuff like that. It was like a fast period.
How were they powered?
One was a boat. So we had it actually in a water track that, and was propelled by a mousetrap, like paddle boat. One was completely air-powered, pumped up a soda bottle, to like thirty-ish PSI. It was fun. But, and then we had a fully motor-powered one that starts, stopped, and started again. It went off like a little elevator, stopped on the elevator, went down, and then started again, and kept going. So, yeah, and they all did different things. They're like, the elevator made it so it wouldn't be followed, and like a dead end, and stuff like that. So it was really fun. We all had a lot of fun doing it, so.
And, yeah, we're the high school tech team. We did the same problem that the other two tech teams did. As they said, we had, we were given the prompt of having a robot brought into a family, and the family teaches the robot to do things, and then the robot does the things in an unexpected way. So, you know, as veterans of OM, we know that you never want to do what they tell you to do. So, we took it in a bit of a different direction while keeping with the guidelines that they give you. We put together what I like to call all year a commentary on the future prospects and competition faced by human blue-collar workers in an increasingly automated workforce. Which is a really fancy way of saying that we were Santa's elves, and we were automating the process of making toys. And the elves were afraid that they would lose their jobs. So.
And we were a technical team, so our robot, we actually, the judges actually ended up loving it. We got a renault for it again this year. So it was, it was a robot that was controlled over a phone. We controlled it over Bluetooth. The device itself was completely autonomous, as opposed to the other teams. Even at, even at state competition, all the other teams, they had to manually move the robot, or the robot just sat in the middle of the stage. We made a, we made a robot and sort of got, it sort of went around and traveled wirelessly. And it also kicked a soccer ball. It had like a little sensor on it, and I could see a soccer ball coming in basically, and it would kick it away. So the judges really liked that.
You liked that part?
Yeah.
And our team had a scientific theme. It's team up a family of scientists. And our robot, it kicked the ball, and then it kicked, opened the bathroom door while Griffin was in the tub. It imitated drumming, and then it drummed on his eardrum. So, again, it had to do an action and then do something in a funny way. It imitated drawing with a circle with a marker, and then stirring with a spoon, which set off an explosion in John's face. Those snakes that pop up. So, just, it was really fun. A lot of puns, a lot of scientific puns. So it was really, really funny. They had a great time.
I have a quick question for the guy with the soda bottle. Did you figure out what the maximum PSI you could put the soda bottle?
Yeah.
Fun figuring out.
So, we actually started out first with a nice little piece of PVC pipe that I capped off on both sides. And we went outside, of course. Didn't want to damn dating inside the school. And I got about, you know, ten pumps in, and shot, it shot off the other side and went flying down the field. But, yeah, soda bottles were shredded during, you know, numerous times. It was a fun time, though. Everyone was safe.
I'm glad everybody keeps saying fun, because I know how many hours you spend all year long to do such a good job. And it really pays off, and you make the whole community proud. So congratulations, that was just great, great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's really nice to see the kids, though, because they start out so young, and to watch them go from each level. Because like, we start here, and then I've watched my kids go to Mrs. Lockwood. I've watched my kids go to the high school tech team. And it's just a great program that they stick with, you know? And now I got five moving up to the middle school, so.
You guys make us look great. We're famous. We're famous, and it's your fault.
And we couldn't do it without your support. It's really a great program in all levels of school at this district. It's one of the strongest in the state. And as Michelle said, we've all worked our way up through several years of this program. And it's, it's been a great experience for all of us. It'll be a great experience for everyone going to Worlds for the first time, and for everyone going to Worlds for the last time, so. Yeah, I guess thank you enough.
Like I said last year, again, like, thank you guys so much for all the, like, programs and different classes you guys offer us. Like, I've used so many things from my different engineering classes, and AutoCAD, and all this stuff, crazy stuff like that. Like, last year, again, we made a tread that would carry two of our teammates. And I designed the whole thing in AutoCAD that I learned from, you know, Mr. Moran's mechanical drawing class, and made it work there. So, again, our classes help us, too. It's not just, you know, out-of-school stuff. So, thank you.
And for the seniors that are here, I can definitely say, for me personally, and also Jake, Odyssey and Mind was a pretty big part of our college applications. And it definitely was something that impressed people, especially on like interviews and stuff. On multiple occasions, I talked about Odyssey and Mind, and stuff that we did at Worlds for like over thirty minutes at an interview. Just because it's a, it's a program that, I mean, I think, I think a lot of schools do have it. But when you, when you tell someone in college, like a college professor, or someone in admissions about it, oftentimes they won't know anything about it. And it's really interesting to them, and just sort of, it's nice being able to show off all the stuff that we've, we've been able to do. And just personally, thank you again. I think for a lot of us, this is, on the Division III team, we've been in it for many years. This is my tenth year personally. And just the amount of things that I've learned from it, the amount of fun that I've had, and the amount of, you know, productions that we've put on. It's just a great thing, and it's a program that I'll definitely remember. So, thank you.
So who's graduating? Would you guys, mine, just tell us what you're doing after graduation?
Sure.
Well, I'll be going to Brown University, and I'll study something there, I imagine.
I'm going to the University of Vermont, and I'm studying pre-veterinary medicine.
I'm going to Westchester University for early childhood education.
I'm joining the US Navy for advanced electronics.
I'm going to a seven-year dental program through Milunberg College and U Penn, so.
That's great stuff, congratulations.
As Abra said, I'm sure Odyssey and Mind was a great boon to me and to him in the college application process. I wrote my entire Common App essay on my years of OM.
I did as well. My entire, the essay, the essay that went out to every single school, both of our essays, that, one essay that goes to every single school, both of them were written about Odyssey and Mind.
Big part of all of my interviews that I had, and kind of convinced it was a big part of what got me into the schools I got into. Because it really is a unique experience for all of us that are able to be a part of this. Something that a lot of people don't have access to. And we're really lucky in this district that so many of us are able to be in this great program every year.
Thank you for that information. It's really important for us to hear.
Because even these young guys, how many people want to do it again next year? Yep, it's a program that just stays with them, I think, right?
Well, we'll see you back next year when you can tell us the great stuff you do.
We hope so, right?
Where are you guys going?
Michigan State.
I'm sorry? It's in Michigan State University?
For all levels?
Yes, all levels.
Teams from thirty.
It'll be teams from thirty-three states and thirteen different countries, I think, or sixteen different countries. So.
Thirteen countries? Yeah. We have five teams against, from China that we're competing with alone. I think China, Mexico, Poland. Yeah, Germany, yeah.
Yes, it is. It's a great opportunity, because the kids get to meet the other kids. And they design pins before we go. It's kind of an icebreaker. They trade the pins, they talk to the other kids of the other teams. They talk about their schools, and where they've been, and what they're doing, you know? And I said, it's really nice to see the kids. After about the first day there, they're not shy anymore. They're like, hi, and they jump right in. And it's, it's nice to see, you know? And to have that experience, to talk with kids from all over the world is great.
Best of luck, guys, we're proud of you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the cool shirt.
Thank you very much.
Hey Brian, is Pete out there? I was wondering if the spelling bee.
He went to his. He went to check on the.
We weren't sure if the spelling bee champ was coming or not. Okay. No, okay. We weren't sure if he could make it right or not. The spelling bee champ is from DB Middle School this year. And for the tri-state area, and then he'll be going jewelry and knottin'. And he'll be going to Washington DC at the end of the month as well for the national scripts, Howard, I'm gonna let you see on ESPN.
That's great.
Okay, so I'd like to take this opportunity to hear from Molly's fella. So we have a lot going on, so this way you don't have to be maybe too long.
Thank you. I guess before getting into anything prom-related, yesterday was the Special Olympics. It was my first year participating. And it was just a really awesome event. I was at the results table, so I didn't really get to hang out with any of the kids that were there. But I was, I had a good spot to see the finish line. So it was just awesome seeing people, you know, even the adults that come from PCDC in the local areas. It was awesome seeing them. They live for it every year, so you could tell when they walk across. It's exciting to see their faces. And then we just finished up, well, not exactly finished up. I still have a test tomorrow, but AP week was this week and then last week before. So that was successful. We, I survived. I still have one more, though. So we gotta get through the next one. And then, next two weeks will be Keystone testing. And then, so prom is my last thing on the agenda. So I guess I'll just go through like a timeline of how everything came about. So last Friday, Dr. Blom was aware of the health violations, came to his attention about the health violations at Best Western. And then within about, I would say maybe an hour, it was all over the school, as rumors spread like that. And I had at least ten people come up to me at the end of the day asking me, what was going on? What is this? I don't understand. Is this true? What's happening? So I went to him, and we talked about the whole thing. And it was hard, because you can't really do a lot on a Friday. So we got to the weekend, and then agreed that, you know, he was gonna investigate the situation, everything was gonna be handled. And then the weekend happened, and rumors spread like crazy. And it wasn't just kids, parents too, on Facebook going a little out of proportion on everything. So there was an investigation that happened on Monday. And then after the investigation, I believe, Dr. Blom, till late last night with Dr. Blom and a few of the other teachers, just calling local businesses, local venues, to see what other options we had available for prom. And everybody was so willing to help, even if they had no availability whatsoever. They were very, you know, apologetic to hear our story, and said that they couldn't do anything to help us. But there were a few businesses that they came up with, they gave us options. Some with a few that had date changes. But all the options were presented to myself and Matt Cavallaro, as well as the prom committee on Tuesday morning. And then we were put in the room to decide, between all the options, which one would be the best one for us for prom. And we eliminated them one by one, going through pros and cons of each venue. And we ended up with Kalahari, which will, it's in Pocono Manor, I believe. And I think everybody's gonna really enjoy themselves. The biggest con was that the distance, which I'm sure is what most people are talking about still. But I think when they see the venue itself, they're going to realize that it's extremely worth the distance that they have to go through. So that's how we got to where we are. Good, yeah.
Did I see there's some buses being provided?
There is. Yeah. For people that are, you know, they can't drive themselves there. There's three buses at every campus that we have that can take people to and then back as well.
Does the Best Western provide a full refund?
Well, thankfully, they didn't get our check yet.
That's always good.
Yeah. They were really wonderful. I mean, their general manager, Super Moto, he is, he's a wonderful guy. He totally understood that we were both in a predicament, you know, from both sides of the PR issue. So he was wonderful. And one of the options, you know, I, we were, we were gonna lean on them. One of the options was to have it here in the gym. And if that was the case, we probably would have had ready tables, chairs, and linens from him. Before we come up with those, a couple days ago. But he was wonderful, right Brian?
Yeah.
What's your last AP test?
AP Human Geography.
That's tomorrow?
Yes, tomorrow.
So how many AP tests did you take this?
I had three this year. So I had, my first test was the first Wednesday, AP English Literature and Composition. And then I had AP US History the following Friday. And then this one is my last one, AP Human Geography.
And you're graduating?
Yes, I am.
And I heard you talk about, so where are you?
I'm going to Pace University next year. I'll be an early childhood education major with a minor in musical theater.
Fantastic.
Are you free to go study?
I'm free, I have to go study now, thank you.
Thanks for everything, I know it was a long weekend.
It was a long weekend, but we got there. So, very happy with how everything played out. Thank you so much, thank you.
Are they gonna be using water slides?
No. Not this, it'll all be rose.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting held on April 20th, 2017. Motion, Dawn? Cory, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing objections, the motion carries. Any bond to administrative reports? Are there any comments on administrative or attendants reports?
I just want to say to Dr. Blom, the Model UN Club, what a timely subject.
How about that?
It's amazing.
Yeah, they were, they're recognized. They were the best delegation at the Model UN Conference at Horry'sburg. So that's, that's quite an achievement. Mr. Yalvin and the kids.
Yeah, their resolution on nuclear disarmament.
If someone may take them up on it.
I was gonna say.
Jim, I was just, I'm sorry Cory, I didn't think. I was wondering what is holding up the Perkins in the Senate, the Perkins grant?
They, they were concerned about the, actually it was an issue when they thought the election was gonna go the other way. They thought they were giving the Secretary of Education too much power over, over how they, how they could dictate things to the states as far as regulation. And it did hold it up in the Senate, because they wanted to clearly define what the powers of the secretary would be to, to enforce regulations against the states. So that's what held it up last fall. It hasn't yet been introduced, reintroduced in either body, but there is bipartisan support. It came out of the House with over 400 votes last year. They expect that it'll probably have bipartisan support again, because there's great support for it. And both Senator Toomey's office and Senator Casey's office indicated that, you know, they would support the reauthorization of the bill with giving the states more control over the regulations that they enforce in their own states. Another issue was the definition of programs of study. Pennsylvania already does a great job identifying the task lists that all the kids have to, have to complete in the programs of study. But not every state is like Pennsylvania. Some of them, they don't have pre-identified tasks. And in the federal law now, they're, they're making sure that, that every state that gets federal money for Perkins must have identified programs of studies with identified tasks they have to complete. Pennsylvania's been in the forefront, because we've had that for many, many years.
So do you see our funding being held up?
Uh, no, the funding through the bill that was just passed by, by the House and Senate, the continuing resolution, funded it at a level, level funding through the end of this fiscal year. So into next year, we look like we should be in the same ballpark as far as funding. So, but down the road, the proposal is to increase Perkins funding from 1.2 million to 1.9.
And concerning wellness and health, you're, you're having meetings, I guess, and revamping. So I know we're looking at policy. Is that what you're revamping in that policy? Or is there something else?
It's that, and then all the components of it are, we will be working with the Wellness Committee, and then helping utilize that group of people to help educate parents, as well as faculty and students on the various components of them. For example, survey, we'll do a survey every three years that we'll post on the website to glean feedback from the community and so on. Mr. Roselli will help that, then to design venue plans and things like that. He's a key member of our committee. There are some things like snacks in schools, that birthday parties, all of those kind of components. So we want to be more proactive in educating people to meet the, meet the nutritional guidelines. Also, trying to think what some of the other components are. Fundraising that we do in schools. Making sure that they, that if they are doing during the school year, they allow you so many that, that don't need the guidelines and that can't go above and beyond that. And we do a pretty good job of policing that now, but we just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
So once you get it all situated, you'll come back to us?
Well, the policy is ready to go. But now as we roll it, excuse me, as we roll it out, we'll be making those changes to our district-wide plan and educationally, making sure that we start getting all the stakeholders on board.
Yeah, the Wellness Committee will, will help us in the implementation of the policy, and in the implementation of administrative regulations that will be put in force that back up the policy.
We have to answer to the policies, so we want to know what you're doing.
That's right.
Thank you. And Superintendent, any comments on the financial reports? Thank you, anyway. And Superintendent, your report?
I only have two additional things, three other things we already mentioned, so thank you for that. The Prom Special Olympics and Model UN, so we'll cross those off the list. The Seventeenth Annual Big Alert Journalism Competition at Wilkes University was held a few weeks ago. And our high school kids, who have Wesley Lordy from Delaware, won twelve different awards, including the Best Oral Journalism Program in the RPA. So that was really prestigious. My son's, get this, my son's roommate's dad is an English teacher at North Pocono. And I get this text saying, holy jeez, I think they're gonna win every award! You know, it's what he said about our kids. So that was really cool. So I immediately sent that to Wesley Lordy while she was still at Worlds. I'd say anybody else is jealous. So, but they cleaned out, so that's really fantastic. And then the other thing I wanted to make mention of is the engineering. At the Bob Curtis, at the Engineering State Competition with his kids, eleven of his kids qualified to go to Nationals for the engineering competitions. And that's, and we had our very first time, we had our first-place team in one of the competitions. Normally, like, if you're placed, you get to go. But we actually, for the third time, so every year it seems like we get a little further along and become more well-known in engineering on the state level. Eleven to the Nationals, that's pretty fabulous. Must be doing something, right?
Well, I mean, the paper that we get to read, I mean, that's extraordinary. Anyway, that's, that's, I think it's like college-level material. It's really good.
Yeah, yeah, I've never seen, in all my years, I've never seen a high school paper. And that story about the frame case was, on the front page last night, it was tremendous. You know, from the student's perspective, and the dad, state trooper. That was, wow, that was something.
Now, some of those engineering students, are they gonna be presenting at this?
Now, some of those engineering students, are they gonna be presenting at this? Oh, we had an invitation for engineering, right? Are they gonna be the ones presenting?
Many of them are the same if they're seniors. Uh, the thing we got invited to was Engineering Four and Senior Science Research Seminars. So that's two senior courses that we do the joint demo, uh, demonstration under a project. I think that's before our board meeting, right? Or before our work session? I think it's somewhere in the, in, and try to move it there. But that stuff, and Chuck will tell you, and John, John, I remember him having this before, Chuck, I know he's been on a ton of that. That night is pretty good.
Yeah, it's amazing. I went last year, I was away by the sophistication of the projects.
Senior Science Research Seminars, of course, they pick a project and they work on it an entire year. And then we, when we hit June, then it's, they show us a year's worth of work, what they've accomplished.
What is the date of death?
Is it the eighth?
It's the work session.
Oh, okay.
You could attend most of it and still be here at seven.
Okay.
Runs to about 7:35. So it's in. And that's it for my report.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Can I just, I mean, I think, uh, John and Brian, it should be said, really did a good job dealing with a sort of sudden potential disaster with the, the prom situation. And, uh, you know, I, I've heard from people who are, who are concerned but are pleased with what you were able, and that was a lot of work that they did. The students, uh, you know, like we were saying, they don't teach at pretend schools, but.
It's another chapter in the book, right, Brian?
John, where I love it.
Yes, thank you. I agree.
It's a delicate topic, so I think, you know, we're all very prescient, a lot of respect, I think. Fact that you know we appreciate it is sufficient.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you very much. Uh, may I have a motion to accept the Treasurers' report? Jack and Jessica, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing objections, the motion carries. Moving on to bills for payment. May I have a motion to accept the bills for payment, which include the General Fund, Cafeteria Fund, Capital Reserve Fund, and Debt Service and Internal Service Fund? Jack?
Second.
And Chuck? Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. The, um, the health insurance, Phil, how often do they shut down?
Our health insurance? We have, we're part of a trust that are self-insured, so the, it's for administrative services only. That goes through. And, uh, 13 school districts are part of the trust?
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no objections, the motion carries. May I now have a motion to approve the personnel items, including resignations, appointments, child rearing leave, extension of bereavement leaves, and change of status?
So move.
John? And?
Second.
Chuck? Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. The Board Secretary position that we're nominating Bill for tonight, um, have we had that before here? We had a Board Secretary, because I was unaware, but who was the Board Secretary?
I'd been for a while, but then every four years, the board just felt a lot of signed documents that come in often on behalf of the board.
All right. I, I just wasn't aware that we had a Board Secretary for, for the three years that I've been here, but I don't know, because obviously this is important.
Prior to, I think it's probably been, I don't know, 12 years with this. I'm probably thinking before that, it may have been like.
Was Sue Manzi?
Yeah.
And then she was due was?
Years ago.
Jean Traubin. Jean Traubin.
Jean Traubin.
It's just with all the talk that.
And then before her was three years, well, three months.
It was with all the talk that the administration's work that you do, I was just wanting to know if this was, oh, you're giving you additional work? But no, you're already.
That's, I mean, there's, there's certainly, Julie and I really work well together. She does a great job with coordinate the minutes. And then the most, the rest of it is just kinda coordinate the legal documents that follow up any board action.
It was Jean Traubin.
Yeah, she was polished, wasn't she?
Yes, she was amazing.
Okay, the flip side stuff, thank you for doing that. The family and consumer science teacher with that salary, that was put off today, was it not?
Yes, it's a matter of day, yeah. We just, we got here to say yes, because I got it at 9:00 AM.
Now, that, the ones that I put the names to, the two TBDs this morning, that was the, the Zed one and the, um,
Guidance.
The Guidance Long Term Sub.
I did have a question about the salary because it's not in, it's not a, it's not a walk-in-the-door salary, it's not a starting salary.
Yeah. Yeah, she has 10 years' experience and, uh, we're getting her to come here from Ohio State. And she's the, uh, this year, the Pennsylvania State, uh, backseat junior here.
It's just, you know, it's, it's not that I doubt that, 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 you know, you give me up the salary for the reason I don't doubt it, but I think we should know, I had it last year, why, when it's, when it's a 12-hour starting salary, why? And the other two, I, I don't care what the board really goes with, but we did, we do have a policy in place about, about last-minute additions. If they wanna go ahead and do it, I will not stand in the way. But we do, I think it's worth recognizing that we do have a policy, not one thing on last minute again.
Well, procedure, not a policy, the procedure. And I told you that last week, we were working on that. And if they, if we wrap them up and they said yes, we pull them on. I guarantee everybody deserves to do notice, you know?
I'm not gonna stand in the way. I just thought it would be part of the. That's, that's, any questions out?
Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We agree.
Now, there's the final, you gotta complete here.
Hearing no objections, the motion carries. Those kind of things we should have from me, John. That's reasonable.
I took fifty.
Okay. May I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss a student issue and a personnel issue?
So move.
High school is no need to ask for it.
Humans put his job down. And the economy.
Two hundred. Thank you.
Can I have a mug for me while we're out here? Oh, we need to ask, okay. There's, there's a Reese's Pieces. There's gum too, if anybody wants. I don't think you know. That I didn't bring. That's what I'm seeing with the coffee mug, you know, nowadays.
This is good. Jack, you're up to ask the Reese's Pieces and the袋子 that go in the bag.
May I have a motion to return to regular session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Brian and Jessica? Oh, I'm sorry, was it Brian or John?
That's fine.
Okay. It does matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing no objections, the motion carries. Moving on to items for approval. May I have a motion to approve additional volunteers? So, Jessica?
Second.
And Brian, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing no objections, the motion carries. May I now have a motion to approve the termination of employee number 216-217-02486 as a classified employee of the Delaware Valley School District effective April 26, 2017? Jess, Brian, and Don. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no objections, the motion carries. And blessed. May I have a motion to approve the request for the waiver of rental fees for the following organizations subject to approved insurances? High County Humane Society to use the administrative office's parking lot on July 8, 2017, for their car and motorcycle show, and head adoption at a loss of rental fees of approximately $25.
Second.
Make sure Cory's there, okay? Uh, Jack and Chuck. High County Humane Society to use the Delaware Valley High School 910 cafeteria on August 26, 2017, with a 20 and a tricky tray at the loss of rental fees of a house of only $15.
Second.
Jack and Chuck. Any discussions?
Is that right? $15?
The parking lot is more expensive than... Yeah, I was wondering how you end that. The cafeteria? Is that because it's your parking lot? They're using your...
They're using my spot.
You probably could get a little bit more.
Or a free cat.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing no objections, the motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the 2017 graduating class pending the completion of graduation requirements? Jack and Brian, any discussion?
How many are on those? Did you know all of them? Roughly how many people graduated?
360.
360.
Fluctuating between 360 and 390.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a big... Between 360 and... 390, 390, 390.
You're not really sure though.
Oh, I thought you meant this year waiting depending on those...
No, no, no. We thought there were 30 kids in danger.
Sorry.
Do I have a second? So I missed the second?
You got it already.
In favor? All right, opposed? Hearing no objections, the motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the textbook list for the 2017-2018 school year? John, Robeski, and Jaffa Lee. Second? So, I mean, discussion?
I, I looked at those books back there last week and, and I was real impressed. They're nice books, you know? They're really nice.
I was just saying, I really love how the kindergarten books look. They help, you know, when you go to Staples and you buy those little workbooks. I've always liked the color and the space provided, and I see that has been incorporated into these. That's, that's really nice. And I would just like to mention that I did read the... Are you still calling them TPECs? The book evaluations?
We changed the name a little bit, but basically it's the same.
Yes, they stay. And, um, and I, I enjoyed reading them and I appreciated those comments and the support that they gave for those textbooks.
Yeah, they do a really good job. They're very thorough, so.
It's nice to hear from them, so. Yes.
Absolutely. Not for all of them, but...
There, there was one comment where, um, was it for the connectivity or one of them that it, it... Conditions would improve is how I interpreted it because they're pretty much going to now change the curriculum to the textbook. There's comments there that once we have, it says there, once we have the textbooks, we will change the curriculum in our comments.
Well, and, and I typically what we'll do is we'll change the resources, but what I always tell them, that playing force of instruction are basically our standards, they're our skills. And the textbook is the resource that enables us to accomplish that, but it's not the curriculum itself.
Yeah, I, it was connections, was that one? And so I interpreted as, yes, we have a need to raise the bar here to change our... And we need these textbooks to support what you've been telling us as far as the standards. So it did come out through that evaluation that that need existed and we now have the vehicles to allow. Yes, because we needed the amount of repertoire with the new standards. And then we added with the resources. So I was glad to see that support.
Yes.
For that.
I was glad to see the new guitar textbook.
Yeah, how about that?
Our new class for guitar where...
That's exciting.
The rest of the world is, seems to be cutting their music program, we're adding to it.
Guitar one and two. Yes.
Continue to do that.
Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no objections, the motion carries. May I have a motion for the recommendation of the awards?
So moved.
Second.
And Brian, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No objections, the motion carries. May I now have a, a motion for the proposed final 2017-2018 general budget, fund budget? Sorry, may I have a motion for the approval of the proposed final adoption of the 2017-18 Delaware Valley School District general fund budget reflecting... This is weird change.
2.13.
A, oh, I thought the...
This is what you guys agreed to last Thursday, but I had a...
So we did add the...
Make motion to amend.
Yes, okay. A 2.13 tax increase at a military of 110.49 mils with a balanced budget of revenues and expenditures of 81,100... 81,102,456 dollars.
Motion.
John? I'll second. Any discussion?
And just a clarification, we want a motion to amend this.
Yes, for the additional position.
Do we table this first? Do we, do we turn this down or do we just, uh, do we make the motion to amend?
You can make your motion to amend it.
Well, this motion on the table. I'll make the motion to amend this to the same verbiage, but 2.33 tax increase include additional position.
Second.
And, um, is that changing?
So properly, the first thing you should do is vote on amending the motion, which is not a vote on approving the motion. It's just amend or not amend.
And after we walk off?
Let's amend to the 2.33.
2.33 and then the, you know, four and the military generating expenditure.
That would be adjusted accordingly.
Okay, so this is to amend the motion.
Can I amend the motion to add an additional emotional support teacher at a cost of 87,000? Make sure we get it.
Yes, yes, okay. Thank you, Jack.
John, okay?
I'm saying no for a motion to add an additional emotional support to the existing proposal. It's no.
Ryan Karstall?
Yes.
Jessica Dentor?
No.
Jack Disher?
Yes.
Cory Holm?
No.
Dan Lutke?
Yes.
Jack O'Leary?
No.
Chuck Pike?
Yes.
John Robeski?
Yes.
Five yes, four no, no, you carry.
So now you have the amended motion on the...
Now we're going to motion.
So?
While we're having a discussion on the motion. Yeah, and, and I will say that, um, for adding an additional administration position, I'm not prepared to do that. I don't think we've had as a board enough discussion. We don't know what the, um, what the job descriptions are going to be for that additional administration position. And I think we need a longer discussion on the motion.
Absolutely. I think the special education is a larger discussion that we need to have, and it can't happen within a few meetings. This has to be an ongoing discussion with involvement from all groups about how special education at this school district looks and what it'll look like moving forward and how that ties into our planning, so.
We have to remember too, that when we had a, a presentation by our special ed department, there was no mention of, um, need for an additional administrative position, but they were, they must have given you so.
Well, when the directors do their budgets, they don't talk staff. No, no directors do. That's always part of the salary and faculty presentation.
I would say that there's a possibility that these positions need be, especially the emotional support teachers in favor of that last year's simple members. Special education, I would agree with Cory. I think we need to have so many things that are detailed in that. That deserves its own. Those children deserve us to have a special discussion just about that. And that's a lengthy discussion. But where are we to go in the future with special education?
Well, I'm certainly, I'm sorry, you've done, Jack?
Yes.
I, uh, I'm certainly not opposed to discussing special ed, you know, a special ed program at, at any time and in as much depth as you need to. But my feeling is that the need for this position is clearly defined, and I do support it.
Yeah, I would agree with, uh, what John just said and add that, uh, I think we've, we've engaged in, in ongoing discussion of special education over the many months. Uh, and I think we, we should continue to always, that that's one of the things that we should always be talking about. I think the, having these positions will give us an opportunity to, uh, address some issues and some, uh, improvements that we want to make. And it's time to vote on the budget. And if we get these things in the budget, we should continue to have a conversation on, uh, special education and, and the faculty resources that we put toward it. But it's budget time and I think it's the right time to add these positions.
I'm supportive of providing special education, special, special education budget with the, the staff and the appropriations that they need. However, I'm not prepared to do a 2.33 tax increase. So I think if we need these positions, then we need to look elsewhere in the budget and whether it's looking at revenue sources or looking at our expenditures, but I won't do it at this tax, at this tax rate. Can I ask what the positions are that you're referring to? I believe there are two positions you're talking about.
Yeah, one is a supervisor of special ed and one is an additional special ed teacher, emotional support.
The human resource person is on.
Right.
Are there any suggestions as to how we could entertain Jessica's? Are there any suggestions as to how we could entertain Jessica's?
I mean, we just vote on.
Yeah, you have to.
Right.
And we can't include it in the study.
There just, just one more comment um, before we vote. We have an eighty-one million dollar budget, that's a four percent increase in what we're spending. Um, and we're suggesting a two point three percent increase in in local revenue through taxes. That doesn't sound outrageous to me. Um, from my point of view, um, if your expenditures keep going up at a greater rate than your revenue increase, you're setting yourself up for a financial problem. And you may avoid seeing that reflected in programs for a couple of years, but eventually, you're going to have to pay for that. You can't just keep increasing your expenses without increasing your revenue. My thing.
You're done?
I'm done.
Okay.
And to that point, um, John, that's kind of what's playing into into my decision um, against the additional director position. Because that's an ongoing expense, um, and one that will just continue to get greater. And I don't think we've had the discussion um, as as a board or heard from administration as to how that new level of um, oversight for that that new administrative position is going to directly affect the students. How is that going to help our students in special ed, a special ed department? We don't know that, because that hasn't been brought to us. So we're adding another layer of administration without any direct benefit to our students, which is why we're here. So yeah, it's another ongoing, so I agree with you, it's it's adding another ongoing cost that's just going to continue to build.
I understand your point of view, I'm not sure I agree with everything you said, but you know, I understand.
I'm just nine of us. Okay. Well, after spending many years on this board, many discussions about special education, recently adding to that discussions about mental health, the need to articulate between our secondary program and elementary program in areas of mental health and some additional special education areas. Um, I consider the changes incorporated into here will be very, very beneficial to the students of our school district. I do believe the both positions will be evolving somewhat, but one in particular, I absolutely agree that the board does need to have some communication with the administration, and I am hopeful that that will happen. And um, just based upon needs that I have seen myself while attending functions in the school district related to IEP meetings, other types of meetings, I can support this proposal.
Okay, I want to thank you and Dr. Bell for your efforts and, you know, creativity and putting together the positions that you did, you know, and hard work you did. Because I agree, I think that you found a solution that that will help not just the special ed students, but but all our students in coordinated, you know, services group. You know, that's a help being coordinated more uh, district wide than than individual, and I think that would benefit all our students.
It was very hard on me last week to say no, I didn't support the the position of assistant supervisor of special education. Me being a person who has worked in special education for years, supported it for years, but to me it was a Band-Aid approach. And I feel now that we are undertaking a very um, positive direction. Thank you. And anybody from the audience? I guess we do have no. Okay, no. Brian Carsel.
Yes.
Jessica Decker, no. Ja- uh, Jack Fisher.
No.
Corey Holm.
No.
Dan Lutti.
Yes.
Jack O'Leary.
No.
Chuck Pike.
Yes.
John Robleski.
Yes.
Four yes, five no, motion.
So I would make the comments, I thought last week we had compromised on a lot of items. We've gotten down to the two point one three. Part of my compromise last week was ninety thousand dollars being removed from the technical lineup, which I was opposed to, but I was going to compromise for the sake of the team. In addition to that, John had recommended that we increase our uh, rate of collection beyond what I thought was reasonable, and I agree with compromise for the sake of the team. But now that we're not, we're not working in conjunction with each other, I would like to remove the ninety thousand and adjust the uh, the collection rate to a more reasonable number. And then move forward with another, another discussion of what the rate should be for the taxation. At least I wholeheartedly agree with John, increasing expenditures at this clip and not increasing revenues. Especially using the technique of collection rate, which if it doesn't hit ninety-three point five, puts us in a tremendous fold, not just next year, but every single year. So I'm I'm more in favor of adjusting the ninety thousand and adjusting the collection rate down a bit and seeing what the, what the tax rate increase would be then.
What do you propose is a reasonable, is that going back to the one Bill had suggested in the first place?
Well, before I get to what I think is reasonable, I'll tell you this, the index every year we meet with our auditors, and they tell us the same thing. You need to go to the index every single year, because every year that you don't is a year that you're losing that money forever. So I, I would think the index is a reasonable number, given the increase in expenditures, not the expenditures go down, and there are certain ways that you can reduce the expenditures. If you want to alter the the direction of this school district. I don't want to do that. I I like everything we've added, and I don't want to go down the road of wearing and start cutting. So if if we ask them what I would like, I get back to the three point three and start there. Get back to John, put it back on the board over here, and let's let's start taking the things out then. Those of us that are going to vote yet, vote yes to a tax increase that's going to be over three point five percent and agree to it.
I think Corey meant the tax collection percentage.
Well, whatever that number needs to get to three point three. I'll let Bill work on that. But we need to, we need to put the two, the ninety thousand back into textbooks undoubtedly to get my vote, and we need to discuss that collection rate. What is it going to be? What I'm saying, John, propose that I beg of the president, I I don't wish to compromise on a two point one three.
It was a compromise on my part, Jack, um, I thought that increasing that collection rate was a way to keep our tax increase down. And typically during the course of the year, we do spend under spending. Um, that's why we end up with um, excesses at the end of every budget year. So I thought that if that collection rate didn't quite meet the ninety-three five, we'd probably be able to make it up in other departments. Um, it seemed like a reasonable way to keep our tax increase down, and um, I think as a board, that's the goal that we have, is to try to keep any tax increase as low as possible. Um, I I certainly understand the points you're making, um, you know, using money uh, that we have set aside for capital expenditures, textbooks, which I think was the plan. You know, it was just like that this year's under spending. Okay, all right. Um. And get to a level. So that that's less money that could go into the capex fund. But it's because we had new textbooks, so the the level we were getting to after the discussion is something that people that buy the textbooks at a typical annual year, we would be there. That was my concern. Yeah, well, I am uh, I'm still willing to live with that compromise, we need butt hooks.
Once you get the numbers, we'll.
Well, they call it twenty seventy thousand to increase the collection rate, and then the ninety thousand and half of that says three hundred and sixty, that would be affected by that. Right, but four forty-six, point eight one added to the three three. That would give me a three point one four, that's. If the collection rate was going to go to the ninety-two point nine that the administration recommended. And add the textbook, and that's three hundred and sixty thousand, so that'll be a point eight one percent change, add that to the two point three three that's on the table, it gets you three point one four.
So, plug those numbers in, I want to get going. I'll make a motion to approve the proposed final adoption of twenty seventeen eighteen Delaware Valley School District budget reflecting a three point one four percent increase and village rate of.
Eleven point five.
One eleven point five eight mils with a balanced budget of revenues expenditures of the same amount, it's still eighty-one one oh two. No.
That would be the other number.
No.
When you add eighty. Plus the second motion is on the tax increase, I can do the math. Right, and then we'll fill the box.
Is that acceptable?
I think you want to announce the number during the process.
That's my motion.
Three point one four.
Four.
I'll second the motion just so we can discuss it.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to, I'd really like to see us stay under three, and that directly contradicts what I just said about our. I do like your honesty. You know, I I admit that, but um, I'm looking for balance, you know, most of the balance, and I'd like us to stay under three. With a small manipulation in that collection rate, smaller than the one that I suggested last week, I think we could do that.
We could do a two point nine nine, is what we're saying. You sound like John Bell here, but that's where he was last week.
I think I said that.
He did, he did, it's in my notes, yeah.
So I'll amend my own motion, am I allowed to do that? I don't have Robert's rules in front of me.
Well, let's Chuck, you like to amend.
No, I second it.
Your amendment.
Your second amendment I haven't even said yet. We're not. The motion to amend this. We have a first and a second on that, and we have to vote on that, right, Ashley?
You have to do the amendment to two point nine nine. So now you're just voting on whether you are okay with amending the motion, not for the two point nine nine.
Okay, now I'm bigger than.
Wait, but that's a two point nine nine collection rate, that doesn't tell me what the tax.
Two point nine.
The two point nine.
So this is a motion.
Actually, I think the, that's some confusion here, this is the the um, the three point fourteen is being amended to two point nine nine. We are only voting on amending the motion that Jack made.
But we never approved the motion.
No, there was no, no, it was amended, so now we're approving the amendment of the motion, it doesn't mean we're approving the two point nine nine.
No, no, I get that part of it, but we never did, the board never did anything with his original motion.
Because he's amending it.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's where, that's what I was.
The board.
The first amendment, okay.
We had to do that, we had a discussion, but I thought we had to vote after that.
See, we need to follow the term.
That's right. You've been studying all year, right?
You ready? John, okay?
I will approve of an amendment to a motion that brings the tax rate down.
Brian Carsel.
This is for the two point.
This is for the amendment motion, not approving the tax rate.
It just comes on the table.
Jessica Decker.
No.
Jack Fisher.
Yes.
Corey Holm.
No.
Dan Lutti.
No.
Jack O'Leary.
No.
Chuck Pike.
Yes.
John Robleski.
Yes.
Okay, we have five yes, four no, motion carries. So now you have to vote on the two point nine nine.
We'll get.
Or get on ours.
So my question is, the special ed one, the the special ed administrator job is in this budget, but the emotional support.
The teacher is also.
They both are, so they both are in with the two point nine nine. So the two point nine nine will cover both those.
This is just reducing the revenues a little bit with the collection rate and increasing expenditures in the textbook area, correct?
They will have those two positions.
Yes.
Do we know what the the difference is though between the two point nine nine and the three point one four between, is it, yeah, she worked figuring that out, is that what that point was? Okay.
Point one five is what he's working on.
Mm-hmm.
Because your proposal, Jack, is to take the ninety thousand completely out, and then the rest of it would be balanced in the tax rate now.
To put the ninety thousand back in.
That, right, 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 what we.
And then adjust the rate, the rest on the rate.
Can I ask one question? So in other words, it sounds like like the only change really is on the collection rate, pretty much. Thank you. And the last motion we voted on.
We never know what the collection rate is, but actually, it's a six point nine three, H K, the captain, I saw. The collection rate, wherever it was set before, which Jackson called for, was, that would be the highest we ever corrected. I'm not holding it for you.
I think at the last meeting, that was makes two that have just said that for the highest.
Okay, are you ready to call the question? Oh, I'm sorry.
She's going to his briefcase.
No, no pressure.
You're on, you're on clock.
I have a dear ox copy, so I'll. You'll take the ninety.
We've got to take it.
Property reduction state patent source. While we're waiting on Bill to deal with this matter, I noticed that the next thing we have to vote on is to nominate you to serve as our IU twenty board member for the next three years. If we approve that motion, I hope you win the election.
While we're waiting to, I was thinking about, um, it's time to bring back up the video recording topic of the teachers' recording, and I just wanted to put that on the, could we do that at the work session? So we don't have to have an extra meeting, that would be a good topic, probably that June eighth, at the third. Okay, so I'll put that on there. Because I get to the time for handbooks and stuff like that, information slips and all that, what that would all look like.
Could I ask, well, as well as the way, uh, I may have missed this, is there any kind of decision in case it was hung with that proposal months ago about the issue for our position?
That that didn't make any of these budget proposals, that's been put on the shelf.
Okay.
Sure. It's like the health on the shelf, they keep moving around, maybe they can get very far.
If I could, the special ed administrator, you have a special ed administrator yourself, right?
We have one, we have a director of special ed, and this would be a supervisor of special ed that we work under, under her.
So this would be a supervisor, you know, this position. And it's, and also you're keeping the support, emotional support teacher in this...
That's in this version, yes, right, right. So both new jobs are in there, the supervisor and the teacher.
In the, um, in the welding program, CTE, can you get flashed off the computer?
I hope not, I hope not.
We have two eyes like this, this is what it hits you about three or four hours after you put this thing down, this is what it hits you.
Does it feel like a battle, that's like a battle?
What it is, is your eyes actually shed, your eyes shed, just like skin. I mean, you get flashed, you're welding, it can come off in reflection or anything. It drives your eyes out, and that's why you feel like there's chunks and stuff in it. Now, I got, I got drops, it'd be great, I'm out. So I gotta check the box of those, do I put the drops in there? That's not good for your eyes. That's why I'm wearing my life's...
They're huge.
You want some sunglasses?
No, 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 no. I just wondered, it would be so nice if we could just put it on the computer. On the virtual reality.
Sitting on the pillow. In the lab, but I have to go back to it.
Yeah, your eyes actually shed. I was both interested in it when they first told me, and horrified at the same time, you know?
Sounds like an extreme sunburn.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
No smoke, no gases.
Shannon said I looked very trendy.
They matched your tie.
You voted.
I thought you were trying to make a statement about autism supporters. But that's, that's not the puzzle.
The puzzle piece is, right, right, no, it's just a wild...
Actually, we were, we were, my daughter saw Brian the other day, it was full time, and she said he looked very trendy. Was that right? So today when I had these on, she said I looked trendy, that's a new word, trendy. So you and me, Brian, are the trendy. We are setting these trends every day, Jack.
Yeah. Like in the movie Twins.
While Bill is still figuring numbers out, myself and Brian were at Delaware Valley Elementary School concert the other night, and it was right, it was fantastic.
Hands down, best elementary school, Delaware Valley.
I lost. Fourth of it.
For the investors and the...
It was terrific. I mean, there was, I mean, there was real, there was real music.
I expect chaos.
There's real music, it was great.
That's great.
I was taking a post over there, I think most of that, according to shit, were very rich forces, right? They had their concert in jazz fashion, shows a new iron. And the middle school jazz fans, they had the Little Blue Brothers.
Music is so important for young people, in so many different ways, it's so great to see these programs doing so well.
It's just great to see the kids, like your son played a clarinet, I always think, right?
And your daughter playing the flute.
It's good seeing all these kids.
Most ages, I was doing that.
And they were all in different, it's elementary kids, right? So when you hear them start, you're like, they're all... Everybody was in tune.
I have to say, I'm definitely impressed with Delaware Valley's, the, the music program at the elementary school, primary school. Just in watching all my friends' kids at elementary, or basically seeing what they've posted, and seeing what our kids are doing, I'm like, what, what are you guys doing with music? Because, I mean, the, the, you can't really figure out what song they're singing until, you know, a couple minutes in.
They're in it.
There's kids that you can tell completely just are not singing along, they're singing whatever they want. To see the, the kids here, they all know the words to the song. Some of them may not sing along, but they're not singing something else, they're just standing there. But, you know, the instruments that they play, and then the precision that they're playing with at this level, I, I'm impressed with Delaware Valley compared to what I see from, and even, even people that are back in my hometown, they had a wonderful music program when I was growing up. To see what their kids are doing, I'm like, wow, we're, we're doing excellent here. Because those kids just are not getting the same quality.
Well, I agree. There's a little girl who played sax the other night, and all those spots that were, she was a child, she just didn't have those... Wait, 93, do you think that the clarinet stopped it? I don't know. That's right, that's what I'm saying, seeing him carry his...
Yeah, 92.49.
Well, it's all part of, it's not just playing music, right? It's also the confidence, we go, the confidence, they play the band, they play the solo.
The, the kids here just seem to have more, I think, they're more performers, that they're ready to be on concert and sing and, and perform for their parents, whereas the other ones I've seen, it's like, they might need a couple more months before they're ready to perform. I think the, the teachers do an excellent job getting them ready to perform.
Yes, she's awesome, she's not that... She's all right. Yeah, it appears to be a 90, instead of a, 92.9 is what the original, 93.5 last week. It looks like a 93.05 collection rate, at 2.99% tax increases.
Sorry, I got that again.
Yeah.
I apologize.
2.99% tax increase. And the collection rate at a 93.05, which is down from 93.5. That was in the proposed one. Still higher than it would have been this year, not as high as in the proposed. Bill, do we have any idea what the collection rate was, what the actual collection, the actual collection rate this year? 92.74.
We're at 92.9.
Is what we recommended that it was going to increase, originally, in April. So now we're at 93.05, as we just checked.
Right. We're down from 93.5 to 93.05. This is all on page six of your, your budget.
On a 2.99% increase?
Yes.
Are you ready for help? Okay.
Okay. This is the 2.99. Dawn Bouquet, no. Brian Carson.
Yes.
Jessica Decker, no. Jack Fisher, yes. Cory Holmer, no. Pam Lutte, no. Jack O'Leary, no. Chuck Pike, yes. John Robleski, yes. Four yes, five no, motion carries.
So should we try another approach, do you have some suggestions on looking at a reduction or...
I did have one question, the tuition reimbursement. You select up almost $100,000. Is that because you'd expect...
Yeah, we typically, I'm noticing that this year, the increase is because we replace retiring teachers who ever was, he ever was, and was a capital tuition. So it's based on a prediction based on this year somewhat, that's what it did.
One of the things, I'm sorry, one of the things Cory sent out this week was a memo from Bill, I think we all received it, on, on delinquent taxes. So I think what we can do, Pam, is if we can agree on a, on a tax increase, and just adjust the delinquent taxes for a difference. So, I know, if you're at 2.5, we all agree 2.5, we ask Bill to do another calculation that brings the collection, not, not the collection rate, but the delinquent tax collection up to that, down to 2.5, and then we're done.
I'd like to discuss budgetary reserve, actually. We haven't used the five, six years, it's out of 250, is there some reason that 250 is the magic number for budgetary reserve? For rainy day, I mean...
It was 350 when I first got here, and then it went to 300, then it went to 250, with the 50 set aside for extra bus monitors. And then we did dip into it last year, because we had so many people retire, so we had a lot of severance.
How much did we get in that one?
We used the whole.
The whole, the whole.
It was the severance last year?
Last year the severance, because we had 13 million except the budget.
So then we used the whole 250?
And this year you're using 50 for special ed bus monitors and 200 because you, you have textbook options, that's what you're using for it.
So it's not really budgetary reserve, you've already budgeted.
No, it's a line item, budgetary reserve. And then when something pops up, say we're using 50 for bus monitors and 200, and that's last.
I'd like to say about down to 100,000 or 150,000, actually, for myself. So I don't know what everybody else thinks about that. But I think last year with all their retirement housing anomaly, I don't think that that's something consistent that we're gonna see. And if we did hit something like that, I'm confident that we could find that money, that difference.
So what would that reduce the tax rate to?
Yes, we could.
Now we're going back, we'll do that on the table, or just 2.33? When we adjusted the kids, 2.33?
Well, I think now we're gonna get 2.99 again.
2.99. I think we're adjusting... All right, so you switched it up, you said 110 or 150, what's on your left?
You know, I...
Well, we have, is it 200,000 budgetary? Oh, it's 250.
I'm splitting half, 125.
125.
There you go. That's the spirit of compromise, as well. Still only gets four votes, I wonder what we do. I'm thinking it's gonna change the vote. It's gonna change the vote, Cory, what do we wish on top?
If you're watching, maybe, I do. Down 3.1.
Okay, thank you.
And this is, get it out of the square. 2.99, that'd be 0.28%, so it'd go from 2.99 to 2.71. So if you did that with the other 2.33, I get that we had. Now you're moving it back where you wanna move it. I can, I can accept that.
What'd you say, 125 or 21?
0.28, so if you went back with 2.33, then subtract 2.8, or 0.28, you get 2.05, is what would be that.
And that would be with both positions in, 2.05 with both positions in.
But that's Jack giving up the 90,000 for the textbooks.
Yeah, that's what it is, Jack compromises. Let's see if Dawn compromises and says yes.
2.05, that's nice, it's even lower than 2.14.
How do we get to 2.05?
We're putting the 90,000 back into textbooks.
And where, where is the tax collection?
You're raising the tax collection back up.
93.45.
Back to 93, yeah. So we'd be taking that 2.0, that 2.0, basically what we're changing is that 2.33 that lost by the four. We're moving that 2.33 to 2.05, by cutting budgetary reserve from 250 to 125. Nothing else is hard.
And we're at 2.05.
Well, we need to make a motion in second.
We just repeat that?
Sure.
So 90, the textbooks, yeah, I just figured you would...
Yeah, if we go back to, we go back to that 2.33 budget, that the, the, that has the supervisor in it, and it has the extra teacher in it. And none of the other changes that we were just proposing with the collection rates or the textbooks, all that would be the way it was when we entered tonight. So you take that 2.33, and when you cut budgetary reserve in half, that deducts 0.28, so then it's a 2.05 with both positions in.
So before we make the proposal, are there any other suggestions?
So I just, I know we, and this was part of what I was asking you also, Jack, is, I know you're concerned about the collection rate, and we're looking to reduce appropriations instead.
Yes.
And you also had other line items, so is that, I mean, are you still, I mean, the board's comfortable keeping it at 93.5 collection rate and not reducing expenditures instead?
I would much rather have a long discussion on reducing expenditures. But that was two weeks ago, three weeks ago. The 2.73, increasing the, that rate would make up the entire $250,000 of $10,000 cuts I told you I made on my own spreadsheet. So it's one or the other, certainly not both.
Right.
So, would, would reducing appropriations be better? Yes, I think so. But we're not having that discussion. The discussion tonight is the tax rate. If the tax rate's gonna be zero, that's, you know, we're gonna decide that, if it's gonna be 3.14, they would shock that down, 2.99, shock that down. We're down to 2.05, which is very interesting, and Jack and I had a conversation, 2.05 is $5 a month. Jack, remember my $5 a month? It's 2.05%.
And I came, I was impressed, you're my shelf, and I came up so close.
You were very close.
I came way, I came out a little bit more conservative, a little bit more, you know? I'm down in the ones, in the ones with that, with those numbers, right? Because those base numbers, is this, there's a, a margin, and if they're those numbers.
Sure, yours is.
Yeah, of course. But I was happy to come close to you, because you're, you know, a financial wizard.
I like my $5 a month, it sounds good to paper, we're asking everyone to pay $5 a month, 105. Just an interesting way we got to where I was two weeks ago.
Now, we did not work on that together, right?
We did not. That's good.
If you compare, you couple up the visitor last year, it's like 250. Just study that.
I, I would prefer that if we're at 2.05, Pam, that we leave the collection rate where Bill had it, and just adjust the delinquent taxes to get us to 2.05.
Instead of current tax.
Instead of 93.5, because that's gonna kill us next year, at 93, because we, we have to go higher next year, at 93.4.
Increase the delinquent, decrease the current collection.
And we're at 2.05.
And for us, it doesn't matter. I mean, for, for us, it doesn't matter if one's higher or lower, it's, it's all about, about revenue.
And the, the taxes have to come through, that's the law.
Jack, can we just say, say one thing? You should have said this to 2.13.
No.
You lost the 0.08.
Now we're down to 0.5, this is better.
I like 2.05 better.
I'll throw this out there, I don't think it's gonna be very popular, but going back to the 1.86, which was without the additional administrator. And then take the, the budgetary reserve split in half, the 125, and using that to add the emotional support teacher. And then we can talk about the administrator in more detail, and look to that for next year's budget.
Remove the administrator.
Well, the 1.86 was without the administrator.
Okay. Carson, I've heard enough from the administration over the years to know that that position is a must, this is the year to do it. Might be, I would have a hard time voting for that, Dawn, I, I feel really confident that we need that position.
I think they made a motion in the second for the 2.05, so we can vote.
Do we get it?
No, it was just, you would just say, motion on 2.05 tax.
Can we make the motion on the 2.05? Also that tax increase.
Can we just hit the military on that?
Yeah.
That's an easy calculus.
Move the one... 110.41. 4.41? To 110.41 mills.
4.41?
Yeah.
Move the military, now Bill.
1.19.
In the proposed budget we have coming in tonight is 0.49, so I take 110, so I'll take 110.41 down to 110.41.
So you're raising the 2.25 mills.
John, you ready? This is for the 2.05. Dawn Bouquet, no. Brian Carson.
Yes.
Jessica Decker, no. Jack Fisher.
Yes.
Cory Holmer.
No.
Pam Lutte.
Yes.
Jack O'Leary.
No.
Chuck Pike.
Yes.
John Robleski.
Yes.
Five yes, four no, motion carries.
Thank you for the administrative... Thank you for the administrators for putting up with us, first of all. But for a really good job on the budget, I know there's eight binders in the other room. But if you all want real good detail, a lot of fun stuff in that, you can read that, read just those. But we appreciate all your hard work, Bill. I know Bill should be in a hospital bed right now. We want to get him out of here as soon as possible.
I passed on you, right? Jack, he's too close to you.
I gave it to him.
Get one on each side.
Thank you.
We can call boom over there, so.
Did you surprise a one at the ER?
I would just like to say that. I've been listening to what every board member has to say. We have some differences of opinion, but I really appreciate the respectful way that we listen to each other and try to compromise and.
I agree, John. And although we have different opinions, and you know that special needs is very close to my heart, so it's very difficult for me to say no to anything that's thrown out for that. But I just feel the ongoing expense, we haven't had enough discussion for that. But I am very grateful to all of you for considering and looking to emotional support and putting, you know, the dollars there to add the support.
I'd just like to add to that, that what Brian was saying, regardless of how this vote went tonight, we need to have a sensational special education.
Special education, mental health.
Yeah, right.
Very good. So Brian, this is correct, we're at two point zero five. We are leaving in the supervisor and the supervisor's support teacher. Textbooks will not be reduced. Is that correct? And what was the other provision?
A budgetary reserve was being cut in half.
No, your reserve cut in half.
Oh, we didn't do that.
You did not do that.
Oh, did not do that.
I thought that wasn't it.
All right, what we did was we reduced the collection rate back to Bill's recommendation and we increased the delinquent tax collection for the difference.
Oh, okay. To what?
That's Bill's new number he's working on. It's going to add two hundred.
Well, it's going to add two hundred and seventy thousand dollars roughly to the delinquent tax number. And it's going to decrease all of the seven municipalities projected collection rate, so.
The delinquent forecast is off. It will now be in the budgetary reserve.
Of course, being.
Right.
That's right. That's a fact.
Right.
Should I ask a re- question then? Is there kind of a median figure on assessed home value with the increase of per on the average? On this, on this one?
Yeah, we have a handout if you don't mind the effort, though.
Well, that doesn't have this rate.
It does, it has the rate from the start of the night with. It's a.
You think like a ballpark that's on me?
Yeah, we can adjust this right now.
And again, that'd be median, so it's overall.
Okay.
So the average home in our district is assessed for the last ten years or more at twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. That's the average assessment. Right. This handout, which I hope we have one weighing also, will show that the tax reduction over the past ten years on a cumulative basis comes at two thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars per household. Not commercial. Commercial does not participate in the Act One law. But we've actually reduced taxes over the last ten years by a combined amount of two thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. That's what this handout will show. So we're doing a great job with taxes with the help of Act One. When it comes to us, we must allocate the entire amount of that money to tax reduction. So take a look at that handout and you'll see where we've had incremental increases of sixty-two, well, it's zero, 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 zero. Sixty-two dollars, seventy-nine dollars, fifty-seven dollars, zero. Sixty-two dollars is now sixty dollars. So we're on, we're actually making two bucks.
Do you want, yeah, we've got.
That's the same way you want.
Let me do another thing.
Yeah, can we vote on everything else while you compute that? What are you working on, some analogy?
I was working on a question. The new military is two point oh five. The increase in tax protection. Two point oh five, not two one one three.
The military is one one zero point four one, okay?
And you're working on that average home while we vote on the rest?
The average home is sixty dollars. It's about five dollars a year.
Sixty-five, so there's your five dollars.
Five dollars a month.
Didn't you come out with sixty you were too?
No, I was at, I was at sixty last time you and I talked. But I'd be happy with that. I like the way we got to it tonight better than my friends compromised on. But I think this will help us in the long run. Because next year we're able to see the tax collection rate again. And if we have an underage in the delinquent taxes, we'll be able to address that with reductions in expenses.
And just to make it official to the motion, the motion needs to have revenues and expenditures at a rate of eighty-one oh six six seven seven six. Got to pass it past.
No, was that eighty-one oh six six seven seven seven? Is that?
Eighty-one oh six.
Eighty-one, Diane. Oh, six, six.
Seven, seven, six.
Is what I mean.
Now we'll display the thirty days. Yeah. We're doing all. Please.
Okay. Everybody has their numbers already. May I have a motion for the approval to nominate Pamela Lutte? No, to serve as a colonial intermedia board member for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand nineteen. January two thousand twenty.
Diane, and thank you.
Yes.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing objections, the motion carries. May I have a motion for the approval of the readmission of student two thousand sixteen dash two thousand seventeen dash one thousand nine seven three effective May seventeenth, two thousand seventeen?
Motion.
Dawn, and who else? Any discussion?
It's really nice to read most students.
Sure is. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing objections, the motion carries.
That's a topic I see.
Oh, yeah. Just a reminder to review board policy two forty-six, student wellness. And please note in the minutes that policy two forty-six, student wellness is under review.
I do have questions on that policy. I haven't finished going through it yet, but the ones that I have gone through on page four, it talks about the wellness committee engaging in certain activities within the budget established to these purposes. The wellness committee has a budget issue.
They don't. It would be within the building.
Within, yeah, within budgets. Sometimes it might be the food service budget or. But we can also spend some more time on this at the, at the Juilliard work session. Since it's so big.
Yeah, I don't want to keep this here.
And then we'll vote on it. I mean, we can make some more changes on the eighth. There's this weird stuff that you want us to change that we're allowed to change, you know, based on the federal regs. And then we'll vote on it on the fifteenth and then probably in the summer, we'll probably get a whole new one. We'll be in compliance for July one, but I got a feeling that Sunday for due, that the rest of agriculture is going to change everything. And we'll likely redo it all over again with a new secondary.
Semi-bidation.
Suicide wellness policy also. To discuss that one also. And other business, we go to the board first?
Sorry?
Other business?
Yes, I did have a question about the July meetings. Were we having two meetings?
No, July and August really, I'm not.
Okay, so I would like to have a July or last meeting to discuss CapEx over the next five years. Just a meeting dedicated to that? Because there seemed to be some confusion as to what we're doing. I know we were set for twenty seventeen. All of that's in motion. We're not set for twenty eighteen, so we're.
We have enough money for it, but the year ends up a vote to that, right?
So I'd like to begin that conversation early enough so that we're not sitting here next March or April without a plan in place. So since this is the two months we only meet once, maybe one of those months we can meet twice.
When, when in July? When is the meeting in July?
Fourteenth, any, thirteenth?
The thirteenth, right.
The twentieth would be the other usual meeting.
We have a regular meeting here. It can be a work session, it doesn't have to be a board session.
July works better for me.
Yeah, me too.
We're going on the thirteenth, right?
Right, so the thirteenth is our board meeting.
The twentieth would be, we normally be meeting the thirteenth and the twentieth, so.
I'm not here on the twentieth, but you guys can go without me. I'm on vacation that week.
So the twentieth, we would make that into a voting meeting?
So if we go back a week, John? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, John.
I can't do the first Thursday for the law. What about the last Thursday of the month, the twenty-seventh?
I can go on vacation now. And I'm, I'm gone.
Could we do a different day?
It's just a work session.
What about a different day, a week of the thirteenth? Well, John's the way to hold it, right? No, the week of our meetings.
Billy just said, how about we, what if we went six o'clock on the thirteenth and moved an hour to the CapEx list?
An hour's not enough.
What are we doing? Are we going through the list of projects? Are we going through the money?
These are things I think we all agree that we're not doing.
So it's not the money stuff, it's the list of projects?
Right.
Well, we could start at six and then start our meeting at seven thirty. That'd be an hour and a half. You know, we start the meeting later than normal or even eight so that you don't have to give up two nights.
Yeah.
Because our.
I would think ninety minutes and we'll be exhausted.
Our physical agenda in July is pretty sparse. Because our goal is to try to hire everybody we can in June. And then it's only like last minute surprise hires and things like that in July.
What if we did the board meeting itself at six o'clock and then met after for the CapEx? So let's get through the meeting quickly.
Yeah.
And then stay after and do the CapEx.
We do a video call down.
July.
What about the June meeting at when? What year is it?
The June meeting is the fifteenth.
I'm sorry?
Fifteenth here at seven.
We'll get that camera.
July, July, thirteen. Facebook Live. We spoke to him about Facebook Live. Now we decide through the meeting at six, then do the, then do the CapEx list.
That's July.
Right, that's July. Don't put that in the paper. You'll confuse everybody. People show up at six o'clock next month by June by mistake. You know what I mean?
Billy, can you do Facebook Live?
We could do Google Hangouts.
Google Hangout? You're talking to Genetix. So Jack, can you join us? It's a work session.
In the middle of it, that's the other place I'm going to get a signal.
Middle of the lake?
Oh, you're going to be.
Probably wear glasses.
I'll have better glasses.
Well, would you have an opportunity before that to give us your input on the CapEx project?
If you want to commit a sympathy or whatever, if you want to be whatever, give a portion of the list, do something on fire.
Promote gambling. Take a class on gambling.
June eighth, we have a work session at seven o'clock here in this office. June fifteenth is our regular board meeting, also here. Seven o'clock. Next. Both of those meetings are seven o'clock. Good question. When's graduation?
Graduation is the sixteenth. So on that night of the fifteenth, we'll have the top twenty-five kids here and the retirees like we usually do. That's always fun, the night before graduation.
Will we have cannolis?
No, it's not Italian, kids all Victoria this year.
What happened to you?
I put it down. I bought my arena.
I can't get on with cannolis.
Without the hat.
May I have a question to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.